County School District Number One Board to order. Do you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Silo, would you lead the pledge? I just wanted to say that John's at home recovering from a, from a horsefight. And he, he seems to be doing pretty well. So we're happy for that news, but he is with us on Zoom. We're going to move on to approval of the agenda. I have one thing I would like to add under discussion items number three. I would like to discuss the parent guardian citizen communication policy with district staff. And I, another, at least one other district in the state is, is working on one of those two. So I'll tell you a little more about that then, if that's all right. Does anyone have any other additions?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried? Recognitions? Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. I would just like to recognize our wonderful student council and their advisors for the great homecoming week we had last week. There's a lot of school spirit, a lot of fun activities, and I was just proud of how they conducted themselves, especially Mr. Matthews here. So thank you to all of them.
Any other recognitions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. Presley Fitzwater would like to speak with us now. Welcome, Presley.
Madam Chair, I can't hear what she's saying.
On me? Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear now, John?
Can you hear now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
As many of the FFA members are in the seats behind me. I have lived in Newcastle my entire life, although I live right in town. We all grow up in an agriculture community because of the beautiful place we call home. Ag is what fuels a lot of things around us, as we all know. And I've never thought twice about the impact of agriculture on every single community member, even if you didn't fit the rancher stereotype. My mom grew up with horses rodeoing and helping on the ranch where she could and FFA. The stories never stop. I never really thought the FFA would hold such a significance in my life as well. I took the leap last year deciding I was going to become an FFA member. To say I was nervous was an understatement. I sat in my room countless nights debating myself, rethinking the decision, knowing that I was going, I was not going to succeed nor fit the part. Thoughts of not fitting in, not being good enough, and trying to be something I'm not, did nothing but eat at my mind. The day came that I was going to have to really decide what I wanted to do and if I was gonna take this step and stick with it. Of course, I had some great influence from my family and a promise of a prom date. So I took the chance. I chose that day that I wasn't going to give into the me versus me battle that many of us can never push away from. I'm now currently enrolled in my second year of ag education, hold an officer position, and am considerably, seriously considering choosing an ag-related job for my future. And all this is because of our amazing advisor, Ms. Pischke. Words can never quite ever explain what Ms. Pischke means to me and all these members in the crowd. I would like to think of myself as a pretty great student. Nothing much pushes me to uncomfortableness before I can figure it out. But Jill's class pushes me to that uncomfortableness in such a healthy way. Jill faces all of us with the no opt-out situations. She pushes us to succeed and find meaning in what we are learning and achieving every single day. After class one day, Jill got in contact with me about what we were working on in class and about my future in ag. From that day since, she has given me no opt-out situations, and I've done nothing but succeeded in everything she has faced me with. Jill is the answer to a great number of every single member's success in our chapter. Jill has done wonders for my life, the biggest one being my writing and pursuing using my voice to express, express ag-related topics to educate the community and benefit my learning experience. Jill found this strength within me and did everything in her power to train it as a muscle to our chapter. She saw a light inside of me that no one dared to flip the switch on to. She found something that would suit me most of all and give our chapter, chapter the diversity many don't have. She takes all of her students and finds individual strengths within us, building something no other chapter could ever compare to. I can't, can without doubt thank Jill for my continuous success in writing. I successfully write for two newspapers, our local paper, and the biggest ag issued paper in Wyoming, then continue to love FFA and learning in her classroom every single day. Jill simply holds the chapter together just like a family. She has done so many things for all of us, and without her, we wouldn't be a chapter. Jill puts her heart and soul in absolutely everything about her classroom, whether it is her welding and shop students or her agricultural science students. Jill works at bringing in countless grants to better the shop students' projects. For just this week, we just received one today. And as well as getting many different simulation pieces for ag science classroom, such as simulations of birthing livestock and performing ultrasounds on livestock. Hearing the news that one of our most favorite teachers was leaving us sent complete heartbreak over the classroom. It aches everything in a person to teach ag, and no one will ever compare or come close to how Jill runs her classroom and creates an educational environment for all of us. She pushes us, makes us work together, and doesn't let us give in to ourselves without trying first. Jill has created, created this legacy and a legacy we all call family. No non-active FFA member will ever understand what her FFA chapter and classroom are like and what they do for each of her students, nor do I think that there are even enough words to sit here and explain to you. Sitting in that class that day hurt every single one of us. We sat unknown of what the future will look like. We sat there flooded with the idea that all we had left was a couple of class days and one more FFA meeting. As a student experiencing this, I would never wish it upon anyone. Having to sit with no idea of what is going to happen didn't feel right. Chasing together the thought that we have no FFA trip, no FFA chapter, no CDE practices, no more POAs to work for, and most of all, breaking family that no student should ever have to be faced with in a classroom. We have wonderful staff members here at Newcastle, reaching from the elementary school to the high school. And with that, we have great coaches and advisors. But at what point are we going to start protecting them and protecting the students behind them? At what point are we going to realize people in our community are breaking amazing things? Things that quite merely build our future, one student at a time? At what point are we going to lose enough pieces to this puzzle to realize something is wrong? Our community will never quite understand the hardship us FFA members are going through, because all we can, all they can see is the tip of the iceberg. FFA and extracurricular activities merely shape our future, but what is going to happen to our future without it? Thank you.
Thank you, Presley. We'll move on to action items. Consent agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Others in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries? Old business. The WCSD Number One Virtual Learning Education Policy on second reading. Brad, do you have a recommendation?
I do, Madam Chair. So I would recommend on second reading, the policy as written with the modifications in your board packet. And I believe all of the recommendations, both from the board and legal counsel, have been addressed, or that's my hope, because we still have one more run.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the WCSD Number One Virtual Learning Education Policy on second reading. Is there any discussion? I will just say it, it did look to me as well that all our concerns were addressed in that. So thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries? We'll move on to item number three, executive session. We'd like to hold an executive session to discuss a personnel under, a personnel issue under Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, little i, little i, and a student issue under Wyoming Statute sixteen fourteen dash four oh five, little x, little i.
Second.
So we moved and seconded to approve an executive session at this time. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried? We would like everyone, to ask everyone to move to the front of the building, to Brad's office for this break, because we need to use the microphones. Standing in the hall here makes it less confidential. So if you'd all move to the front of the building, if you're not involved in the executive session, we'd appreciate that. So I'll bring this meeting back to order. We're moving on to new business, blended learning services. Mr. LaCroy?
So, Madam Chair, this sort of goes along with the second agreement, but I am recommending the Blended Learning Service Agreement with the VLN. And just to let the board know, we are still working through some curriculum, curriculum alignment, i.e. state standards, and, and the rigor piece, which sort of goes along with the third reading as well. So anyway, just, I, I, I'm recommending that, but letting you know that those are still items that need to be addressed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Blended Learning Services Agreement with VLN. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay? Motion carries? Classified recommendation?
Madam Chair, I recommend to the board Tony Pishati as a bus right, bus route driver pending the background. Check. Sorry. Didn't finish my sentence.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Tony Pishati as a bus route driver pending background check. Is there any discussion?
Sorry. Did, did we have them before?
Okay, for some reason, I was thinking.
Not to my, not to my knowledge.
All those in flavor, in flavor, he's saying brownie up here. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries? Certified resignation.
I would recommend to the board the approval of the certified resignation of Jill Pischke as an ag teacher and permission to post.
So move, what's your request? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified resignation from Jill Pischke as ag teacher and to post the position. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Paul?
Silo, I would like it in the record that she will be missed.
Jason? I would, I would also like to add that we thank her for her dedicated service to her students. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion carries? Moving on to item D, permission to sell old bookmobile.
Yeah. So what I'm asking or recommending to the board is to allow administration, which would be Troy. In accordance to our policy, this is where you actually go out and do the, it's called a closed bid process. But that actual bookmobile is no longer needed or in service. But to dispose of it properly, that what we've done in the past is, is done the closed bid procedure, and that'll be something Troy will run through the newspaper and different publications. The high bidder wins. And usually, if you live in a neighborhood, you hope it's not your neighbor who ends up with the bus. But anyway, with that said, that's usually the process that we follow.
Move to approve? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow the district to sell the old bookmobile. Discussion, Jason?
Brad, is this like the bus where you have, with, without the engine type deal or?
No, I believe this one because it's not student transportation, which doesn't fall under the, the federal regulation. We actually purchased that through donations and other things. So it's, it runs. The, the biggest concern that we've had with it is, over the years, it's taken on quite a bit of moisture. And then with the books in there, it really is not something that I would think would be good for students or staff, but somebody that, you know, wants to, to remodel and has a skill set to remodel, there, there's some possibilities there. But it's not the kind of apparatus where we have to, you know, drill a hole through the engine block or, or do those things that are in compliance with the federal guidelines that would include student transportation, is my understanding. It could be a really, yes, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries? I would like to amend the agenda to include under new business, item E, letter to individuals as discussed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, for our staff to drop the letter to the individuals that we discussed in executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries? Directors' reports. Mr. Student Council Homecoming Director, you're up first.
All right. Thank you. Um, well, the homecoming week just finished. I think it went pretty well. All of the leaders of the committees did a really good job with leading their committee and making sure everything that needed to be accomplished was accomplished, reaching out for help when they needed. They did a good job. Participation wise, the freshmen and sophomores really stepped up and had a lot of spirit, whether it was in their hallways or mock Olympics or the pep rally, they did a really good job. And then finally, with the actual homecoming dance itself, I think it was reported we had sixty-six percent participation within the dance, which I think is relatively high numbers compared to, to previous years. And we had quite a few people who stayed all the way through and had a really good time. So looking in the future, we have WASC coming up, which is the state Student Council Conference. So we're folk, Newcastle's in charge of the dance component and alternative activities that comes along with that. So that should be fun planning. We're going to be focusing on fundraising to try to get as many people as we can to go to that. And that, that's what we're looking for in the future, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. From all accounts, it was very successful and and you don't know this, but I'm a Tongue River Eagle graduate, so sorry about that.
No, she's not.
Angie, do you have anything?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Taylor?
I don't have anything either, unless you have questions.
Come on, son, you're on a roll. No, I just.
No report for me tonight either, so.
Thank you. Would you?
And when we make a public records request and are told by a county clerk that, that they have to retrieve it from the vault and it's going to take thirty days, that's, that absolutely should never, ever be said to anybody.
Right. And why does it take however long to get the minutes put up on there so people can actually see the minutes? When in today's technology, it's as quick as, you know, you, you copy it, you paste it on there and you're done. It, it's really, the, the update of our website, there's a lot of things that we, and I, I said it in the city council meeting just a couple of days ago, all of us as commissioners and city council members, in the past, they have kicked these problems down the road, and I can list five right off the top, the Good Doctor during COVID, dispatch, the contracts with dispatch, the costs that are incurred when it comes to these Title twenty-fives. They have asked, the hospitals asked for solutions for these things.
Okay. They're gonna let me do this job again someday. Mr. LaCroy?
Not so lucky. So in front of you, and I apologize, I don't know if I have enough copies for everyone, but one of the things I thought we should discuss is where we are with our, our projects, our ideas for projects, and of course, the most important piece is, is how do you fund those? So what I did is, is I actually have a list, and then what I thought we could do, Madam Chair, with, with your permission, is we could actually turn this over to the Building and Grounds Committee, and maybe they could prioritize those kinds of things, because one of the things that I'm worried about is when you start looking at this list, there's really no way that you can do it all. And my biggest fear is, is if you try to do too much and you use general fund money, then we could jeopardize staffing and programs for our young people. So one of the, and there are no priorities here, just so you know. So these are just random ideas over the years. And so with that, I do have the gentleman who actually constructed the track, which is out of Renner Sports. They're going to come and look at, again, what an artificial turf, i.e. track complex would look like. And, and I'm assuming somewhere, again estimating, you're going to be between seven hundred and fifty thousand to maybe a million dollars. We also did have the horicologist that came in from Buffalo, Wyoming last week to give us sort of an estimate of, of some field repairs. And if you notice, there's, there's really two ways of looking at funding there. There is a chance that you could ask the state for major maintenance funding, which you can look at later down the list. Right now, you're sitting between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars, and you could use a chunk of that money to do that. The thing that I would caution us all about is, is the general fund piece of that. And again, I think when you start looking at the list, you'll see the other project that has been discussed over the years is, we really can't retrofit the doggy bleachers for just a handrail. And so when you go into the handrail and the whole engineering of that, you'll see back there, there's some different flooring samples, and there's actually some seating that go with that. But projects as a priority, again, you're going to be around that two hundred and fifty, maybe even up to five hundred thousand dollars there. Long discussion over the years about it's time to look at the auditorium seating, that is the original seating that was placed in there, I believe, around the nineteen seventy-two mark. The reason I put endowment behind this one is I do know that there has been considerable talk in the community that people would be more than happy to donate maybe a bank of chairs, series of chairs, one or two chairs. And in the back, they would have a plaque in memory of mom and dad, or, you know, the class of twenty-two recognizing a, a student that had passed. But anyway, that's another one. Quick update on the elementary egress, still have not had any of the landowners reach out, very eager, at least, to talk about an easement. And so with that, the other thing that we did talk about is to that east end is doing some kind of another ramp that would give you access to Highway sixteen. If you go by the, the numbers that were given to us by YOD, you're close to the five hundred thousand dollar mark. If you talk to local contractors that know that kind of stuff, they, they think it would probably be closer to that three hundred thousand dollar mark. But again, in this case, I don't think general fund money, I think general fund money would be your only option there. I don't think major maintenance would allow that, although you can always ask. Some other ideas, and these are just random ideas, again, just to let you know about major maintenance. So we do need to look at a long-term replacement of replacing the cubbies out at the elementary school, because the school is not getting any younger. Cubbies get wore out, and again, that's major maintenance. We also have like a wall repair worth some moisture, i.e. windows that is in one fifty-one, which is the fifth grade classroom, and that would be a, a general fund as well. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as, as I go down here. The other thing that we've discussed is the possible savings of money of switching out the football lights from the existing lighting to LED. And I do have the grant from Black Hills Energy for that one. One of the things that we just simply have to do, and I'm not sure really where this money's going to come from, but I have two suggestions, is the pool lighting does need to be replaced, it needs to be updated with the LED. We have no choice, because those really are the lights that you need for the competition. And that twelve thousand dollars is either going to have to come out of general fund or rec money, because of the next item down, and that's having to replace those pool boilers, which is going to take, in our estimates, all of your ten percent money to simply just, just get those boilers replaced and how we do that. The other thing that we've discussed is the need for a, a different kind of an elevator at the high school that would be like a, like with an elevator that you'd see more like in a hotel or a business where it's used all the time. The one that's in there right now really is more for emergencies and being in ADA compliance. So the life of that is not what you would call public use. And I can only tell you from visiting with my friends up in Buffalo, Wyoming, those things are very, very expensive. And even just the trying to find the repairs to keep the one going now is, is a nightmare. So that's something I think we need to keep on the radar. Again, I'll just, I'll go back real quick. So major maintenance, you're looking at, right now, you're carrying about a six hundred to a seven hundred thousand dollar budget. General fund monies. Um, general fund monies, I always like to tell everyone that Angie's got plenty of money, but we do know. We do know that Escher runs out. We do know that um, our possibility of a very, very small kindergarten is is alive and well. So we gotta be careful with that. And then just for the new board members, what we've always tried to do in the past is try to keep that general fund money at about a million dollar mark, just because we do know that um, issues do arise, whether it be maintenance issues, um, it could be, uh, yeah, the biggest one that we really worry about general fund money is special ed placements. Um, and we always used to use the a rule of thumb of about two hundred and fifty thousand. And my experts now tell me that that's dating myself, that that new number is probably closer to the four hundred thousand, uh, half million dollar mark. So with the rec funds, you are running around about two hundred thousand dollars currently. Um, although you do have uh, the average cost of about twenty-two thousand dollars per month in wages and utilities. And with the increase of the water bills and everything that's going up, um, we have to be really careful about how we spend there. Um, so anyway, the only reason I just share this with you is there are a lot of different things that I think we all would like to do. Um, I think you can see the budget really doesn't meet that. Um, but I think if the building and grounds got together with with Mr. Gregory, maybe we can start prioritizing that and then looking at different ways to start tackling them. Um, because I don't think any of these issues are gonna go away. Just because we are a high-use community activity venue. So with that, I would try to ask, I will answer any questions you have.
Before we do questions, Dana, would you tell me who's on Buildings and Grounds Committee, please?
Building and grounds is it's water, chicken, crack tree and man to be.
Well, that sounds like a fun committee.
It's something maybe we could just do like little mini workshops in the before the board meeting night and not create an extra meeting on top of a meeting, but just a thought.
Yeah, so we can maybe the next.
If I forgot something on the list, that that's not by design. I mean, truly, I'm sure there's other things that people have thought about as well. These have been the, what you would call more of a high activity, high community use kinds of of list.
So what do you guys think about Buildings and Grounds meeting at six o'clock on the eleventh of October? Would that work? We just work here. Work here, meet here.
Yeah, I'm sure I have a question though.
Okay, well, Jason was first.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, two questions, I guess. My second one, I guess, will be more for the committee um, for that. Um, but Brad, on that, for the placards, for the endowment, the placards. If something were to be vandalized, who is responsible to replace dear old mom and dad on there? Or is that is that the school's responsibility? Is that whoever purchased that that chair to replace said placard if that was to be damaged or?
So I think there's a couple of ways we could look at that. Um, in visiting with other districts, one of the things that they do upfront, which tends to be a little expensive to me, is they sort of double the placards. So if something's vandalized, you just simply swap it out and move on. Because there is a really good chance you're not gonna catch the individual that did the vandalism, but you also don't want the family that shows up to graduation knowing that by golly, that was mom and dad's money that went to that chair and and who has the placard. Um, so those would all be things I think we would look at. It'd be very similar to what I think we did with the doggy bronze. I think whatever you try to sell and you're gonna promote, you gotta make sure you follow through so that, you know, the list of the gold donation people, I believe originally was said that, you know, it was gonna be outside on a placard and and then there was gold brown, gold silver bronze, I think are the three categories. Well, over time, that list has been lost. And so truly, what what we advertise that as never really became a full-fledged project. And so whenever you're gonna ask people to do that, I think our job is to make sure we can carry out that part on our end. So if if it's double placards or if it's, you know, training the students uh, to make sure that they can run the etchers. So if something happens, we're not waiting a month for somebody from either Casper or Rapid. Um, I think there's things of that nature. Bryce could talk to this a little bit better than I, but you know, I think one of the reasons that we bought the apparatus out in the wood shop that carves photos on wood and um, metal, and I can't think of what it's called. Anyway, I think if if some of that could be done in-house and we could help, you know, pay people to do that, then if there was a replacement, that that specific training's here. And and it just generates. Because let's face it, there's always somebody that wants to mess with somebody's items. I mean, whether you're talking about the nineteen sixties photos or seventies photos that got vandalized years ago. Um, you know, and uh, you know, and truly, even when we had the all-state awards up in the hallway, there were times where people would just simply want to do the vandal vandalizing of that. In looking at the class composites, it's not unusual for somebody to take a shop object and go across somebody's, you know, picture on that plastic. Um, so those are all things that we're gonna have to probably consider as we move forward with that. But I was just throwing it out, I think one of the things in my opinion, the endowment has always suffered from is where does that money really go and what are the needs of the district? And and maybe this is a way to help promote the endowment and then also give it some purpose. So truly, if I'm gonna give ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars, I know that that's X number of chairs. And then I'm not sure how you wanna donate that, but then if you want to donate it to a certain cause, you can do so. Um, I've seen other school districts and communities do that. And it tends to have a way better um, reaction than just, you know, let's put money in the endowment.
Oh, you wanna follow up? Okay.
And then my second one, I guess, like I said, for the committee, um, with uh, with the football field, I guess, one question I would ask you guys would be what what would be the cost of our maintenance for the for the grass field? And with the rise in in the water bill, what what is our cost for watering the field? Um, I would like to know those also, just to.
Actually, Angie, if you could, if you could just take the, I would just take the last year billing. Although I'm not sure we read that minute, is that metered separately? Then you could just add the forty percent. Or is that what it was? Forty forty-three percent? Whoops.
Madam Chair, is there a any way that we could lock into a price with the city, negotiate with them on that?
So in the past, there was an agreement that we were offered a reduced rate um, for those big items that we do have, i.e. the pool. Um, but they are working through their legal um, team to see if they can still honor that request as well. And then just so you all know, the idea behind that is because we did receive a reduced cost of that, then their employees as part of their wellness program could use the pool and the weight room exactly the way our district employees did. So it was sort of a a mutual kind of an agreement. So hopefully they can work through that and and we don't see that that large of an increase, but um, if if it is, the thing that Greg and I've talked also towards the building and grounds is we may simply have to start zero escaping some of our property because you're not gonna wanna water the oval out in front of the elementary school that no one even gets to play on. Um, those kinds of things are what we're gonna have to start looking at if if that doesn't happen.
Sean?
And then um, wrestling plaques and pictures, is there any chance of getting that put back up?
There is. So um, one of the the directives that I I recently gave the new ADs. Um, so what we have is a Title IX issue. So for example, um, the reason they are down is we were not in compliance because it was male only achievements. So for example, if you're gonna do, and I'll just do like kinds of seasons. So if you're going to do all-state football, at the same time, you should do all-state volleyball and all-state um, swimming. Now, we do have a swimming wall, I'm not arguing that. However, that's at the swimming pool. And so you have to have equal help me representation, thank you, um, for those sports. And the same thing would be true of boys and girls basketball. Um, of course, um, you get boys and girls wrestling now. Um, so whatever we put up there, you have to have both. Um, the problem that I think the new ADs run into is you're gonna have to have something that's pretty flexible, because what we ran into last time is, you know, they'd look at that and say, well, wait a minute. You forgot Ron Smith in nineteen sixty-two. Um, well, then what you have to have is that flexibility to move some over and then add that. You gotta go get a picture, a picture of high resolution so that the machine can read it and put it on that plaque. So Alicia has uh, and Carrie have a daunting task in front of them. We still have the boards, they were not destroyed. Um, yeah, but what I did have to do to be in compliance with the with the um, I can't remember who we got reported to now, but anyway, they asked that I did take them down. I had to show them a picture that they were in storage. And then I had to also send a picture of the wall that I had taken them down. So I believe that issue has been resolved, but I also think I believe if I understood the Mills family and in memory of Ronnie and Mary are wanting to to take a pretty good donation to do exactly that, you know, to take those walls and and give it equity um, in representation.
First off, Brad, you're talking to the wrong guy about pitchers.
Thank you, Trustee Fitzwater. I was not gonna go there. I I did my darndest to avoid that. But yes, now that you've mentioned that, we are still in need of a
Got her at a lunch.
Nice, well. Well, again, and I would just encourage you all, as you have some time, October fifth and sixth, we will have our uh, visiting team here from the state. Um, and you're all welcome for lunch, that always helps. And and if the photos are there, then people will be able to recognize you.
And and also, Brad, Brad, I do have a question. You said you had a grant from Black Hills Power to replace the football lights?
Right, so it's a energy efficiency grant. Uh, years ago, it was, I think, twenty thousand. My understanding now, it's been dropped to five. Um, but if the the sooner I can get that in, the better we are. I was told the new monies will become available for that. Um, energy efficiency grant come January first, but all of this year's monies have been expended.
Can we tie the pool into that too? Or is it just strictly one? You can only do it for one thing?
I, the pools, the pools gotta be the pool's gotta be done much faster than January. I'm not saying that it's not, well, here's my pool expert. Um, you can still have an event there, but with that lighting, if you have a day where it it tends to be very cloudy or overcast, that lighting's gotta take place ASAP and we're waiting for those bids. And the minute we receive that and the equipment, it's just gotta be done. How you choose to pay for it um, will be up to you, but it 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 can't wait till till January, or at least in my opinion.
Um, oh, yeah, sorry. So it is more of a safety issue than anything, especially as it gets dark at four thirty when the time changes. Cause I know we had to put the competition lights on, cause there was a lot of ballast that were and because they're old. So, yeah, it's, to me, it's pretty serious.
So I I know I'm jumping the gun on that, but is that something we probably should put for future agenda items so we can vote on that going up for bid next meeting?
You could, but I don't believe with that price range, you actually have to go out for a bid. I thought it was twenty-five thousand. Uh, sorry, I I think. Yeah, I I think you're, I think you're well under the the requirement to have to go out for a bid. And and I think really what we need to do is is, Teresa just stated, is is if we can find um, a local vendor that has the the resources and the materials, you just simply go pay for it. I mean, we got, it's just gotta be done. And either that or you lose your home swimming events. And you're gonna have to regulate open swim based on your sunlight.
Wow, there you go.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
That's all I think I have, Madam Chair, except again, just a reminder, October fifth. Um, the team will be here. Um, if you can make it anytime or part of that time of the day, that's great. The sixth is really a condensed day. The the committee will spend all of the time that we really know of, um, which is two and a half hours, two hours. Um, they'll actually be in the schools um, on the sixth. But if you want to join us for lunch, and I can't remember when they'll actually give, they will provide the scoring sheet sometime on the sixth as a closing remark. And I can't. Yep, well, lunch will be here on both days. Um, there will be breakfast kinds of goodies here as well, cause people will be coming and going periodically. Dinner is something that they'll probably do um, as a team and it'll be a working dinner and it won't be, it won't be here. Celo says yes, it's yes. Believe that's all I have, Madam Chair, unless you, I think that's enough for one night.
Okay, board reports? Yours hasn't met. Yours is tomorrow. It was gonna be getting on a plane at six AM for Boston. I did move that to Thursday. So I'm going to Boston Thursday and uh, I will be back on the sixth, so. I, it's a five AM flight out of Boston, so I might be here for lunch. We'll see. So that's the International Foundation of Employee Benefit Trusts meeting. Okay. Discussion items. WSBA Annual Conference, November fifteen through the seventeenth in Casper. Celo needs to know who's going. We do. I'm sorry, what did I skip? Oh, future agenda items, I'm sorry. Future agenda items.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we've had uh, eight steers, or I guess they're not steers, they're bulls, uh, donated to the school. But we're just having a hard time trying to find a place that, uh, cause they're rodeo bulls and they're a little ranked. So there are not a lot of people take them. So we did get eight bulls given to the school. So just want to let everybody know.
Did you call Taylor? See if he wants to limp limp around after some of them? He'd probably say no. Okay, thank you, Sean, for that. And thanks. Okay, thank you, Sean, for that. And thanks to the donor. Did we want to say who that was or not right now? Okay. Future agenda items. Nope, I'm doing that under discussion item. Well, I guess it will be a future agenda, but let's do it under discussion. Okay, so School Board Association Annual Conference, November fifteenth through the seventeenth, there are five Thursdays in this November. I like that, because it's more holiday season. So who, uh, do you want to think about it? Do you think you're going now? You go. Angie? Are you gonna go? But don't you have a group meeting? Yeah. Okay, good. She said she'll be there for her group's meeting at least. So yeah. And we will need someone to represent us in the, uh, the delegate assembly. And it's probably Joe's turn, isn't it? You're very well spoken, Joe. We trust you. You know, you know our temperature about things. They made me do it my very first year.
Madam Chair, to be consistent, usually it's those that aren't in attendance.
So John Riesland will be our.
Is, 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 is how the board has always worked that in the past.
Please. Please, please think about doing it. Jason? Jason will think about it. Jason will do it. You can, you go with him, so you do it next year. And so they think there's something in our water. I'm sorry. I'm getting punchy. Okay. Here's my suggestion. On board policy review, we're going to be doing some of that every meeting. We've had a pretty long and, um, intense meeting so far. Would you guys like to table discussing those policies until the next meeting?
So.
Any discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're gonna move those back when we're meeting. Oh, yes.
Is that the format in which you want to use or? If not, Celo needs to know.
The format?
Is that, is that sort of what you wanted to do is we would just take that series? And then after the review?
That's what I thought.
And then we would just simply adopt it and then we would update it September twen- well, that's not true now.
Right, but, yeah.
October eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
That was what I understood John intended to. So I think that was just fine. And I, and I have a whole bunch of remarks too, so it wasn't going to be fast and furious. All right, thank you for that. Um, number three under discussion, apparent guardian citizen, uh, communication policy with district staff. I'm the person who brought that, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I thought that would entail. I thought that policy should address the expectation of clear, civil, and respectful communication with all district staff by parents, guardians, or citizens of the community. That, um, I don't know if it's, it's my understanding, some staff, um, especially teachers, have been approached um, to change district policy. We, I thought we could put a notation in this policy that said, um, district policy discussions should place, take place with the superintendent who will bring them to the board. Um, just to take that off their plates, too. They would know that, who to talk to then. Um, we may need to, uh, state that the Board of Trustees is responsible for maintaining a safe work environment free from harassment. And that, um, I'm not sure how to word this, but communications, uh, in pres- in person or via email, text, or phone that result in um, a possibly hostile work environment uh, would fall under, um, I'm not sure how to word this either, but, but certain steps. And the, the first step of that would be that, um, future meetings uh, that a parent, guardian, or citizen wanted to have with a staff member would then include two staff members from the district. Um, just, I think that cuts down on, on any hostile or bullying behavior. Um, and that, um, I don't know how we'd want to we'd want to address somehow phone calls and text messages, um, that a text message would either have to be in a, a group format with the two designated staff members. Email could be CC'd to the, say, the principal or the superintendent, um. Phone calls, I think if, if it's moved to that kind of situation, then we should probably say that phone calls will just be, uh, with um, this principal or superintendent to set up a meeting. So that would be the, the first step. If it continues after that, I think that's where the attorney and Brad and Bryce's expertise would come in to see how, if, if that continued on, then how, um, that the policy would address that, um, with those folks, so. Mr. Jenkins?
Um, Madam Chair, also, um, and I don't know if this could be, I'd like us to look at too, and I don't know if we can just tie that in with that, that policy, if this needs to be a standalone. But looking at, uh, the, the code of conduct for the extracurricular activities, um, basically with regards to parents and spectators and what we expect of them. I don't, like I said, I don't know if it, this, if that would need to be a standalone or if we can tie that in with, with what you were uh, talking about there.
Thank you, Jason. And I'm, and I'm, I tried to look through the different sections of policies, and I'm not sure which exact policy this would go under, if it's, if it's under. I, I'm sure our attorney will know exactly where that needs to go, but, but the code of conduct, um, I would think that could certainly be part of it.
There is already an existing code of the conduct for staff. Um, although Nick and Allison are going to have to sort of guide us on, on this new piece and, and maybe even, you know, it, it could be a major conversation that we do have in November uh, at the state meeting as well, because that is a time um, where that networking takes place. And it's not, I mean, it's not just Newcastle. Um, and maybe, maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Maybe we could just borrow somebody else's wheel and add some spokes to it.
I, I did forget to tell you all that too, that, um, I'm been in touch with a, a fairly large district who's had a very similar situation. And they are working on a policy too. So we chatted a little bit about what provisions should probably be in it and and he will share his with me and I will share mine with them, whoever gets done first. And we can. Yes. Well. Anybody else have anything about that? Thank you for proceeding with that for us. We appreciate it. Anyone have anything else to come before the board? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Go Jason, go. Thank you.
You guys good? Roll on. I called, uh, order the meeting of the Eastern, Western County Recreation Board, uh, approval of the agenda. I got a motion on the floor properly seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, recognitions, do we have any recognitions? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. Seeing none, action items, consent agenda? I got a motion on the floor properly seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, same sign? Motion carries. No old business? No new business? Anything for our information?
I do, I do have one question. I'm so sorry, but the two hundred thousand dollars left, that's two hundred thousand dollars is what's left in the rec budget for this year, correct? And we need twenty-two thousand dollars a month for ten months.
Two hundred and twenty thousand.
We're already under the if you get it twice a year, right?
What was? Yes.
Twice a year.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I was thinking about that.
That's what.
Yeah.
I, that's what I wanted to say. I was sure we weren't already in the, so I just.
Actually, in the fine line, it says, when that happens, then you turn the heat off in the pool and then you create a hockey.
The polar plunge. Okay, any other discussion items? Seeing none?